Good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, March 19th. It's the first day of spring. It is 6:06 PM and we are in the Nashua North Boardroom for the Policy Committee. Let's see, I'm here, Ms. Darling is here, Ms. Lampfrier is here, Mr. Johnson is here, and Mr. Pasca is here. Welcome, everybody. So, we have four items on our agenda tonight. The first one is JKAA, and also I'm gonna lump JKAA-R in there with it. And if you remember, we tabled this at our last meeting because we were working on final report information. And since that meeting, the state has released their form for how restraint and seclusion needs to be documented. And if you guys look, it is about five times longer than the form that we had been using. So, just like our restraint and seclusion policy is significantly longer, the form is significantly longer. So, we kind of just brought it back with a few changes under K, which is page 12 in the packet, but page 10 of the policy regarding distributing copies of the policy. I thought there was another change. Oh, I remember what happened. So, we had also been talking about language around the final report. But now that we have the actual report that the state wants us to use, instead, on page... Hold on. It's so much easier when I print things. On page 13 of that report, which is page 25 of the report, of the packet, the state has included this last thing that says "finalization." And then it says "date, time, report was finalized, in name of person committed completing this written notification." And so, having spoken with Attorney Bennett, Attorney Bennett said that there is no final report mentioned in the statute, and there is no final report form. There wasn't one that we were using before because it didn't exist previously. And so, now we're back to what do we do with this? Do we...I think, I think we have to approve the form either way because we need to get our teachers to start understanding the form and using the form. But then what do we do for our policy? Do we say, okay, it's a final report, and then in circumstances where further action needs to be taken, the district needs to provide more information than that, and we just use this final signature when no further action needs to be taken? Or do we need to craft a form or some language for that? But I think that was the last...I think that's where we were at the last meeting. And unfortunately, the new information I got from the state did not make it clearer.
I have news. So, my...I recently had a meeting and we...I was having...my son got to join the Project Achievement Program. And one of the first things that they handed to me was a printout of our policy for restraint and seclusion. And our wonderful school psychologist made it very clear that that is something that she does every single time, every single meeting, because they believe in transparency. So, I don't...I can't quite remember off the top of my head which individual saying it would be too costly to do that, but we are apparently already doing it. And I was looking at these, like what led to the incident.
Where are you?
Sorry, page 17 of the packet, which is page 5 of JKAA-R.
So, I just want to back up. So, back on JKAA, where it says "copies of the policy need to be made available to parents' guardians after the first restraint," on page 10 on the policy, 12 in our packet. It sounds like that's already the practice.
Yes, it is.
But it was the old policy you got, and I want a new policy to go out, right?
I agree. And I can...I felt really good talking to, at least the team at Birch Hill, getting to go into Project Achievement, tour the area, talk to the teachers and the staff that work there, and really get an understanding of, you know, how they look at working with kids. I mean, it was beautiful to see. And then I got to chaperone a trip up to Concord with this class. And you would never know that any of these children were a part of any form of special needs program because they were the most polite, sweetest, compassionate children I have ever seen. I watched a little girl get a drop of water on her sticker, and she looked like her heart was breaking, and instantly four kids were like, "I've got one, I've got one."
Oh, that's so sweet.
It was...it's a huge testament to every one of those children's parents and teachers that they behaved that well and that they felt so safe and connected with their teachers. And so, I do want to give...I know I'm usually the first person to jump on the restraint and seclusion numbers, especially as they come from Project Achievement, but having met with the Birch team the way I did, like it was, it was wonderful to see. And I hope Broad Street gives me the same opportunity in the future.
That's great. All right. And so, your question was on page 5 of 13 on the policy, page 17 of our packets.
Yes.
About what led to the incident. And I just want to be clear, this is the state form that the state is saying we have to use. So, we can't, like, edit a lot of it because it's not...they're, they're basically saying to comply with the new law. This is what they want every district to use.
This is gonna sound so ridiculous, I think, to, to most people. But like, looking at the page, the way that it's laid out, you've got like the "please provide a narrative for relative events preceding the use," and you have like a bunch of checkboxes that they can check off. And then, again, it says "please provide a narrative of the intervention's de-escalation techniques used prior to..." And then it has all the checkboxes you can make at the bottom. And it continues to kind of go in that same format. Can we flip it so that it's the checkboxes on top with the writing on...I know it sounds silly.
Right. To me, I would aesthetically prefer that as well.
Okay.
I think that, I think that we're limited in our ability to edit the state's document. However, one of the things that, one of the things that I'm gonna ask the committee to do is when we do approve this at the full board, that we set an effective date of a couple months out so that IT has the opportunity to program into X2 this form, right? So that...because right now, it's like a Google, it's like a document, right?
Yeah.
And so, you can't run reports on a document that's not associated with our database, which then, how does that inform our practice so that we know what things we need to do a better job of, right? So, we'd like to get it in X2 to make it more user-friendly. When you put it in X2, I don't know how that works.
I don't know either. Do we, is, do we have any idea of how long we have before either the state form needs to start being submitted and used, or when?
October of last year. Even though it just came out.
So, we...
The answer is retroactive to when the law was...
So, as soon as possible.
Knowing that this was coming, I've been working with our IT department. Other districts in the state are in the same boat as us about trying to upload that form. I wish I had the technical expertise to tell you why that's a challenge, but it's not as simple as cut, copy, paste, and put it in there. So, we're in the, you know, we've, you know, after I met with Ms. Raymond about this, I asked them to start uploading it, knowing that it takes some time. So, I think one of the pieces, we just want to make sure it's in there as soon as possible. I, you think the question you're asking is a very good question, and aesthetically, I think you're onto something here. I just don't know the turnaround time for all of these things because I think what they're doing is if we're, you know, if Nashua uses X2 and Londonderry uses X2, where everyone's gonna be utilizing the same form. So, I think that's where we're at right now.
I mean, if it's gonna be in a digital format, then really the way that it's formatted isn't even as important.
That will print out to be sent to parents. How...right. However, I do think that we need to, I think that we need to get the policy, especially JKAA, JKAA-R, the one with the form, approved and uploaded to our website so that people can see what it looks like, right? Because right now, it's our old form, and that's not what we're supposed to be using. But also so the teachers can start to familiarize themselves with it, and then the district can, can plan whatever kind of professional development our staff needs to be able to, you know, properly be using this in the way that it's intended. The way that it's intended is to really get into the weeds of like, how did this restraint or seclusion come about, and is this our best practice?
So, are we looking at this form going to the parents as well as?
This would be the report.
Okay. So, yes, parents would receive this printed out.
If you look at page, I gotta keep scrolling, lots of scrolling. Page 25 in our packet, 13 of 13 on the form. It says that "this form has to be completed and sent to the principal within five days of the incident." And this is from the statute. And it must be sent within two days of the principal or directors receiving it to the parents. So, this whole form, as it's completed, must go to the parents within two days of the principal seeing it. Right now, our practice is to get our current form out in, what, like 48 hours?
Yeah. And I think, just to clarify that, I don't think in the way it's written on the form directly aligns with the, with the policy. So, it's within five days, the parents have to receive written notification of the form. Within two days after that, the notification has to come from the superintendent or their designee. What Attorney Bennett is, is suggesting and what other districts are doing, and that's why I think we see this check off on the form, is that, you know, some documentation about, okay, within five days, did the, was this forwarded to the superintendent or the designee, there's documentation there. Then after that, there's two days, has that been forwarded then from the superintendent or their designee to the parents? Some districts are saying, if we add something in there that, you know, this form has been reviewed by the superintendent's office, everything appears to meet the requirement, the regulations can also consider this the final notification. If in fact there is an issue, and it doesn't, then another letter or documentation has to be, go out that includes, you know, the special circumstances such as such serious injury, how was it mishandled, what are we doing on the next steps to rectify this, and how were we prepared for this going forward? So, that is kind of the, I think, the question for us here, well, one of the questions I think I wanted to bring up. It does that, talking to Attorney Bennett, he thinks that meets the requirements of what we have here? Are, is this committee comfortable with that, those steps that we have in place right there?
I think, so for me, what you were just saying about, if we go back to JKAA, page 8 of the policy, page 10 in our thing, it's at the top of the page, it says E, Final Investigation and Report. So, we know that he has to determine after completion, so follow...I think we need to change, to fix the language there to say that if those circumstances that you just listed, you know what I mean, if there are special circumstances, if there's injuries, that there will be another written final report, right? As opposed to just signing off.
So, so the thing is, is that we're gonna give this, we're gonna give the parents this written report here, this JKAA-R, and then we're gonna, and that happens at D, right? And then, right in our policy underneath it, it's gonna say "final investigation and report," and the, the whole incident's gonna be, is gonna be reviewed and investigated, and the findings are not gonna be given to the parents. There's no mention of the parents in that E section.
That's what E says. E says, "the final report," blah, 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 blah. At the completion, the superintendent should follow the written notification with the final report. I think it's "follow the written notification to parents with a final report," right? But, but it sounds like, based on the form that the state has created and what other districts are doing, is if there are no further actions required, they're just having the superintendent sign off, no further actions are required. If further action is required, then we have the authority to fix this language to say, you know, if these circumstances are present, then, then the district will send a letter to the parents.
Well, what would, what would be included in "further actions"? What would be the special circumstances? I mean, I think of that woman that came here to one of our meetings, and she had, and her child got the curtains in the room wrapped around his neck, and I don't know at what point she found out about that. And especially when a lot of times, kids that are restrained or secluded are kids that don't have any, are not able to speak, they can't tell their parents anything. It's super, super important that parents can trust us and know that they're getting all the information that they need to know what's happening to their children and to know that they're truly gonna be safe.
I agree completely, completely. And I think, I think the thing is to know that a good, like 85% of the restraint and seclusions that we have, because these are also disciplinary things. So, if a student, if two students are acting out in the hallway, and a teacher says, "Hey, Johnny, you gotta come over here." If he's physically touching the kid or giving the child the impression that they cannot leave, that's a restraint or seclusion under this new law and under the form. Those don't necessarily need a final report unless the, the teacher like pushed the kid down. If it's just a, "let's come over here and talk and calm down," in the, you know, in the hallway, this is not a child with special needs, that doesn't necessarily need further action. But if it's a circumstance where, say, we have a kid who keeps running out of the classroom, right? And the, the, upon review, the superintendent is like, "Hey, guys, did we move the child's seat?" Right? That's, that to me would trigger, "I've reviewed this, and I'm asking for a modification. I'm asking for the district to have an IEP meeting. I'm asking for," you know what I mean? And to me, that's what would generate a final report to the parent to say, "as a result of my review as the superintendent or designee, we need to take further action." And that further action has to include either changes to the classroom, changes to the IEP, changes to how our staff is responding to this. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but what if it's not something that's simple as something that, you know, that, that the district hadn't thought of moving a child's chair? What if it was something with a, a teacher that hadn't followed the procedure properly, or, or something that the school doesn't want the parents to know about?
I don't think that the school has the right to decide that the parent can't know about, about something like that.
I know they don't have that right, but I know that it happens. I've heard stories. And so, that's why I'm really, I'm really, I really want to make sure that this is phrased correctly. I don't know what kind of, what kind of phrasing you were thinking of. What, what were you thinking exactly of putting in there?
No, like, I am, this is why we have the Policy Committee meeting, because sitting on the side, I was like, this, I don't think that this paragraph is working. Can I fix it? I don't know how to fix it, right? So, I'm hoping for brains.
Specifically, what you're talking about, paragraph E, correct?
Yes, because if we give, if, if we give then JKAA-R, right? Which is at step D, they get this in, and they get this information, and then after that, the school does a final report that is...
Which they haven't done previously, right?
I mean, it's the same problem that we had since we began talking about this, is that we have this final investigation and report, and there's nothing in there that says whether the parents are gonna be informed what's found out in the final investigation. They're not gonna be given any information, or they're not guaranteed to get any information.
Well, I think that part E says that the principal, excuse me, the superintendent, designee has reviewed this to make sure it aligns with the statute. So, to your point, if, if what's in here is not accurate, that's another bigger issue here.
Then we should have no problem sending a letter.
What letter?
A letter saying, "the superintendent has gone through, has reviewed and investigating this incident of seclusion or report as is part of our policy, and after completion of a reasonable review or investigation, this superintendent or his designee has determined that the restraint or seclusion was met, was done within our policy and state statute. If you have any questions, if you feel like your child's rights were at all compromised, this is the appropriate action, like course of action for you to take. Or, hey, I'm the superintendent, I reviewed this, there was definitely an issue here. And in which case, I don't know what the best legal terminology would be to use because obviously, we're not gonna sit there saying, 'bad teacher, that's not cool.'" But, we do have a, an obligation to the parents to say, "hey, upon this person, who we trust, looking over this and investigating it, I, I don't think it was done within policy, and we're going to rectify that."
Say, where it says, "at the completion of a reasonable review or regression, if there are special circumstances such as serious injuries to the child, comma, or the incident was mishandled..."
All. I think it should be all.
Wait. The superintendent shall, oh, wait, the superintendent shall follow the written notification with a final report, period. The final report will include findings and conclusions, wait, will include a summary of the, yeah, whatever it says here, "final documentation," blah, 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 and a description of the actions, including any further action being taken by the division. That cover it?
Yeah, because they would have already received this as part of D.
They'll have that, and then we'll say, if there are special circumstances like injury or...
It should be all.
But I guess my question is...
Because part of our policy is that he's supposed to review each incident of seclusion or restraint.
Right. So, do we want him, do we want the superintendent or his designee to write a form letter for everything, every single time that there is a restraint and seclusion that follows the law?
Yes. Yes. Because it could literally be a print, sign, send. It could be, like, if it's a legit "follow the law," it could be a blank template letter that gets sent out saying, "I am the superintendent, I have reviewed this, it is compliant with law and policy. If you have any questions, or if you feel blah, 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 like, here's your process." The only ones he would ever have to really put extra time or effort into would be the ones that resulted in not following policy or law, in which case, we would assume that there's already special circumstances, but this would kind of cover the times where it's not necessarily a special circumstance. This would make sure that it's every time, and it comes with the added bonus, if we include the portion about if you disagree, or if you feel that your child's rights, blah, blah, blah. If we include that, we're doing a huge service to our community in letting them know what the process is for them to be the best advocate for their child.
And that is not required by the statute. However, we do a lot of things that aren't required by statute.
Yep.
Right? Because our job is to be in the best interest of the kids of the district. So, what is the feeling, the committee? Johnson, do you have a thought? No, that's okay. I just, like...
No, I can definitely understand that. And I think, again, yeah, I mean, if, yeah, we know there's gonna be situations where it's simply grabbing a hand or pushing a back or thing, but even in those situations, if we just have a form letter of, "this has been, everything was done according to," every, you know, and then, if you have any questions or concerns, please.
Ms. Darling, when you were talking about, you mentioned, I think, right at the end, you were talking about if, if parents have questions or concerns, I'm not quite sure how you worded it. Does that go, you want that in part C?
I mean, I would love for that to be every step of the way.
It can't be every, I mean...
But I also understand that that is not realistic. No, I would have it...
But it has to be in part D, so they're getting written notifications. So, upon receipt of the written notification, if they have questions, their concerns, they should contact...
Well, I mean, I feel like...
So, I feel like the written notification should be changed to this, like specifically say, this report that the parent is getting within the two days or five days, whatever the, the number of days is. I'm on the wrong page for that, but...
Right. So, should we say, wait, where it says, "initial notification," that's the phone call, that's B, right?
Right.
And then, written notifications, so, I'm sorry, D. Written information, unless prohibited to, to, written notification.
So, is that out of the form?
Should we say, that, should we say written notification is the JKAA-R? Like, should we reference that in there so that it's clear?
Absolutely. And then I would say that the written notice to the parents includes that form.
Yep. Included in the, or the written notification itself, and then, um...
Like, I just, I feel like we should just, like, rename JKAA-R to "written notification of restraint or seclusion."
Right. So, it says, "written information, unless prohibited by court order, blah, 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 or transmitted by, like, to the child's parent." All the, so we should just say, cross out all the information included in the written notification, and write the written notification itself, and then reference JKAA-R. Okay.
And then for "final investigation and report," it would be the "after completion of a reasonable review investigation, superintendent or designee shall follow this notification with a final report." So, that's a secondary notice that goes out to the parents after, and that, the purpose of that notice is specifically to determine whether it was done within our policy or not, and the law.
Into, much like, you know, it's similar to like a bullying situation, we have a form letter that we substantiate or don't substantiate. So, you're saying if it's, you know, upon review, and it seems, if it follows the statute, it says that?
Yep.
It does not, if additional information is, is needed, or more information, or more discussions take place, then the other, sorry, the other notices should be included in that, which is the findings and conclusions, documentary and other physical evidence of the, and a description of the actions taken in response to those findings. So, if we took that verbiage right from the, from the policy and put that into the, the other letter, for lack of a better way to say it.
The letter that we're gonna create, the Nashua letter.
Yeah.
That's what we're gonna call it. We're gonna call it the Nashua Letter for the final report. So, I would also like to, based on our discussion a minute ago, so we're going to, just to clarify, we're gonna strike on D, the, from, the, starting with all, all of the information included in the written notification, and then, or, strike all that. So, it'll say, "we're gonna transmit the written notification," and then it's going to have reference JKAA-R. Okay? So, everyone knows what we're talking about. And then in E, the, after the Ed 1201 to 1203 reference, it'll say, "after..." Wait, no. Keep going. It'll say, the next line, it'll say, "the final report should include findings and conclusions, the documentary and other physical evidence, or summary of oral evidence." And then I would like to add, comma, "additional or different information obtained during the investigation, comma, and a description of actions taken in response to those findings and conclusions." That way, if something is discovered that isn't in the written report, that we are clear that that discovered information needs to be provided. Does that cover your concern about, about the district being required to send out what they discover?
Can you say it again?
Yep. So, on, it says, "the final report should include findings and conclusions, documentary and other physical evidence, or summary of oral evidence." And then I wanna add, "additional or different information obtained during the investigation, comma, and a description of actions taken in response to those findings and conclusions."
Where, where was the parental notification gonna go in there?
That is the notification to the parent. Oh, sorry.
D, that's in, D is written information to the parent or guardian.
Well, after completion of the... We're trying to make sure that the final report...
So, follow the written notification. I'm sorry. So, I, I see what you're saying. So, right after it says Ed 1201 to 1203, "after the completion of a reasonable review investigation, the superintendent or his designee shall follow the written notification to the parents with a final report of the, of the incident." Parents, guardians, we always have to say that, sorry. Or should we say?
The written notification with the final report of the incident to the parents?
Sure. We can put it right at, tack it at the end.
Yeah, that would be good.
So, and then, follow, hold on, I ran out of room. So, on E... Hold on, I ran out of room, so on E. End of that sentence. Look to Tara, she might have to call me. But I'm available tomorrow.
Is it going after incident?
Yeah, after incident. And then it should say, final report of the incident, wait, so follow the, follow the part of, shall.
Should include findings and conclusions.
Final report of the incident.
Parents and guardians?
Yeah, sent by, and then that whole thing, like. Follow the written notification with a final report of the incident. To be sent to the parents or guardians within.
Can we lift from D, can we lift from D? That sort of information in E? In two business days.
The statute says with, after the completion of a reasonable review.
Right, so it might take.
It's already built in there.
Right, right, right.
Right, I'm just thinking, like, if the superintendent, for example, say there is a problem and the superintendent is starting to talk to people and he's like. Ooh, I don't like this, now I gotta go talk to this person, now I gotta talk to this person and I might need to talk to, like. It may take the superintendent several days.
Else comes to light, or, you know, later on down the road.
To track down the whole story.
Right, it could be a while.
And I don't want him to feel like he has to rush.
Right.
To get to a final report if there is something that needs to be tracked down and changed. Right?
What do you, what do you think of this wording? After the completion of a reasonable review slash investigation, the superintendent or his, her slash his designee. Shall follow the written notification to the parents with a final report of the incident.
That's what I was thinking originally.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was gonna say, it, I know, like, when you're stop going and in language, it starts to enough. Like, stuff just doesn't start sounding right, kinda like words don't look right.
The thing is, is that if you say that, it says, she'll follow the written notification to the parents with the final report of the incident. How about we just, that doesn't say that the final report needs to be sent to the parents. How about we just strike, follow the written notification and just write, the superintendent or his designee shall. Send by UPS or first-class mail or electronics means a final report of the incident to the child's parent or guardian.
Love it.
That, I'm just gonna rewrite the whole damn sentence. Now that I've done that, I have to write it down after. Gonna write, dot, 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 and then strike. Follow. We're gonna replace that with. Alright, so after the completion, the superintendent or his designee shall. Send by UPS. I'm sorry, USPS, USPS, et cetera.
Please don't use UPS.
From D.
Yes.
And then, uh. Yeah, to. Guardian. Final report. Or a final report, I don't care. Of the incident, and then we've just updated the final report to add that. It needs to include any additional or different information from what was in the written notification. That. Yeah, how does the, okay.
I'm gonna sound so corny, I'm like, trying not to tear up right now because I'm so proud of this, like, and all of us.
Mr. Pasca and I sat and were like.
Proud of you guys.
I was like, I know that the board is looking for something, but I don't know how to guess there without all of their brains, like, I just. So, I, I was like, we're gonna have to spend some time word smithing it some more, because now that we have this report, now that we have the J K A A and it didn't match up and I.
Yeah.
I literally just shunted it and was like, wait, you can't, can't do it. So.
Know that most people are probably thinking in their heads, like, longer policy, longer forms, more forms to fill out.
Alright, so the last thing that I'm asking, oh, wait, are there any other language changes? Okay, so the last thing that I am asking, oh, and K here, we see on the red. About copies of the policy being made available, which. Darling said that is already happening, so that should be good. What I would like us to do is. Make the policy effective, give the district a couple months to be able to. What I'd like to do is to approve the policy so that it goes on the website as soon as the board approves it. But that it has an effective date that takes place in a couple months, so that we can have professional development on it.
I hate to feel like I'm pushing this off by saying this, is it? Is it more feasible to say with a start date of fall of next year? Because we're already in March.
I don't know.
We only have two more months left of school.
Right, but I, I also wanna be clear that our expectation is that we're following the law.
Absolutely.
Right, and so whether we have an updated policy or not, we have to follow the law. But this policy, I think, goes beyond what the law requires, and so I would like us to have the opportunity to develop now this final report form, right?
Because this, this form kicks in the moment it's uploaded and.
Yep.
All that, because it's.
But I'm talking about the final report form, so J K A A kicks in immediately, we have it electronically, it's just not associated with our database. So it has its own, like, it's not. Can't get data from it.
I mean, I think we're all in agreement about the essence of this, it's the technical challenge that we're facing right now for those next steps, and I think that's why we're asking. I think Raymond's absolutely right, asking for a little grace to kind of make sure we can get the training out and get the, the expectations out to all those involved. What those are, plus we are creating some additional, you know, some additional forms and steps in there that we don't have right now, nothing that we can't do. But again, those are the technical changes that have to occur over the next several weeks.
I, I think I'd be more comfortable saying a couple months than saying in the fall, because I, I think the fall just looks kinda.
Yeah, it sounds like we're pushing it off.
I mean, can we say by August, that way it's before we get to.
So it's before or after the fourth of July?
Right.
Fourth of July.
July first, that's the beginning of our fiscal year, that's when the next, like.
I would say, would you be able to give us a, by the next full board meeting, would you be able to give us a, a kind of a deadline idea of how long IT thinks they need?
Knowing that someone was gonna ask that question, I asked that question today, and I don't have a clear answer for you, I will continue to follow up for you, but I think that was the. I don't have a good answer for you right now, I know it's been submitted, we've asked X two to start, if they can start implementing this. I don't have a, a deadline for you, but I will follow up on that.
I say, I mean, the E S Y program, that's the summer school, right? I would say, I know that it'd be nice to have it in place.
And could, could we say July first?
July one seems reasonable.
Yeah, with understanding of extension maybe needed for technical.
I think July one gives us some time to get this in place, and I think that's very reasonable.
Okay.
Alright, so I'm gonna make two motions then. Um, the first motion is that we, oh, I think my pen is dying. Alright, we'll keep an eye on it, um, that we move to send, I move that we send J K A A to the full board as amended this evening.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, and then my second motion is that we recommend an effective date of seven one, uh, twenty twenty. What day, twenty twenty four, of July first, twenty twenty four, for J K A A.
Um, second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And this way, we have both those questions, when it goes to the full board, they'll be both on the agenda as two separate motions.
Okay.
So that if the board as a whole feels strongly in a different direction, we can.
But that way we don't have to worry about going through the J K A A again.
Right, I don't wanna have to redo the whole thing.
Alright.
Okay, um, and so then, we reviewed J K A A dash R. Like I said, I don't think we are at liberty to make a lot of changes to it, so I would like to move that we just send it as is. The full board. For approval, alright, so I move, we move J K A A dash R to the full board, uh, for their approval.
Oh, wait, we already did second, so this is the.
No, I didn't write down who seconded.
Oh, I seconded.
Okay.
I was writing to, yes, and then I'm like, wait a minute.
Alright, so, yeah, this is just for the form, alright, so all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. I think my pen might last till the end of this.
I have a pen if you need it.
If not, I will let you guys know.
Is it necessary to put that same, uh, implementation deadline on J K A A dash R?
What is the state wanting us to do, like, so, so we have our next meeting, I forget what it is, the last Monday in March, I think. Uh, week after next, I think, no, I don't. Next, is it next week?
Yeah, because then it's Easter weekend.
So then if we approve it, does that mean that, like, the next day, the expectation is that the district start using this new form? I mean, I would like the district to use the new form because we have it, even though it's not meshed with our thing, and I just, I think it's more helpful.
It's a way to practice too and get used to what information's being asked for.
But do, do we think staff needs to have P D on it before we make them start using it?
Well, I just think the, the challenge will be, will not be what they'll be doing. March twenty eighth, so whenever we get this updated is one thing, and then when it becomes into play in the X two will be another piece, and again, that's the technical piece. That's, that's up there, and I think even within X two, there's, uh, there's management which it's, it's forwarded to the, you know, to the appropriate people, so. Right now, when, you know, for example, there was a, 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 a restrained at Urch Hill. That form, you know, there's a way through X two then to forward those to the appropriate next steps of the people, otherwise you're just talking about. Kind of paper trail going forward.
Oh, that's right, because you can't, like, you would literally have to print it out and, like, have someone drive it over to central office, that's annoying. Alright, so I move that we make an effective date of seven one twenty four for J K A A dash R, that it go on our website right away.
Is that okay, I mean, will that be, like, now that the state has finally given it to us, is the delay okay?
Even within the policy, I mean, for a while, these forms were rarely available.
Yeah, I know, they said like last year, right?
So, I mean, I think what we kept talking about was having, you know, you know, the delay in bringing this to you, was I wanted to bring it as a peanut butter and jelly sandwich, so we had everything all at once. Doing it this way, we still don't have that peanut butter and jelly sandwich, I'd like it to all be in one, so when we're talking to the staff. Where it's saying, here's J K A A, here's J K A dash R, here's how the next steps are gonna play itself out.
Okay. Oh, are we gonna be able to vote on the J K A A R at our next meeting, or does it have to go for a first and second thing, or? Or is it because it'll?
So here's how the first and second thing, we can make the decision to request to waive the rules, to have us.
I think we should.
Waive it. I'm of two minds a bit, I think that this is a, a big change, I think there's a lot of meat and potatoes, and I. I think the reason we did the second reading was so that, um, parents and the community members would have the opportunity to be like, oh, hey, this was on the agenda. I missed it, but I wanted to make a comment, right, so this one has been to the full board before.
Oh, yeah, the J K A A has.
A A, but J K A A dash R hasn't, but I think they have to go together, so if the board doesn't wanna approve. A A dash R, then I would say that we. I don't know.
I think they should be kept together.
We can make a motion at the board to waive the rules, to waive the first reading.
Are we gonna have to waive the rules for the J K A R?
Those are our options, we could, we could start over with first reading for both, or we could ask to waive the rules for the form.
Okay, that sounds good.
I mean, I, I just don't think, the form is important, but I think the meat and potatoes is the policy. Right, the form is just documenting how we're following or not following the policy.
I can't see anyone would have problems with the poli, with the form, it looks very, very, um, it's substantial, it has so much information and it's gonna be.
Yeah, I was, I was really pleased to see it, okay, so the motion is to make the effective date the same, July twenty, July first, twenty twenty four. For the form J K A A dash R. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Now making twice as many motions as there are on my paper. Okay, that was a lot. Lot, so, um, the next item on our agenda is policy J F A B D. Education of homeless children and unaccompanied youth. Um, so there is a, um, legal update to this one, um, this is about, um. The McKinney Vento law, which is a, a federal law that governs children who become homeless. Um, and, and basically the rule is that if you become homeless while you're a, a student somewhere, you get to stay in your school. Even while your family works on their homelessness, so even if you, the only housing you can find is out of the district. Those students have a right to continue with their peers, um, until the, you know, until the end of the school year, or until the parent feels that it's in their best interest to move them. Um, so, um, we've updated the legal references to make sure that all of the laws that are necessary are referenced. And then, um, on page two at the top, you'll see that, uh, we've added a requirement for. An annual staff training, um, regarding the qualifications, the forms and the procedures of the McKinney Vento Act. There's McKinney Vento and then it has a dash, so I think it's missing the word. I didn't see anything else in the policy. That needed updating, that was different than our practice, but.
We just did it last, we did it last January, right?
Yeah.
Correct, this was a recent addition, so we wanted it included in there.
I was like, I remember this, this looks so familiar. It doesn't usually happen when I read policies. I'm scrolling down to the bottom to see the last time you looked at it, and it's like, I looked at this, I voted on this, that's why I know it.
This one's not old, but I think it's important.
Okay.
So, um, so that's where we're at.
Okay.
And I, I think that kind of annual training is important, I haven't heard of any issues. Um, Nash was pretty good about supporting our homeless families, but we're not perfect, and I think annual training is a good idea.
And there's a phenomenon happening right now, um, they're calling it lost children, and it's children who were pulled out of public schooling during COVID. Um, so they've, they've been taken out formally, they're no longer, like, hours to, to watch over in any way. Um, but then, due to something happening with the parents, whether that's. Illness, incarceration, sickness, I mean, there's a million things that can happen in a family. Um, it's left us with quite a few children who want to come back to school, but don't know how. And trying to reach these families is incredibly hard, I've talked to Dr. Andre about it a few times now, and. Realistically, it's not like we can go through all of our files and say, oh, this child, you know, this one was pulled out of school, let's call and make sure that they're. In a school now.
And we can't, we're actually prohibited from offering that, because parents have the right in New Hampshire. To hold children from school at any time and say they're homeschooling them, and then there's no further follow-up allowed under state law. So, um, once a child has been, you know, disenrolled and the parent indicates that they're gonna homeschool them. Our hands are not, our hands are tied, we have no, no legal right to continue to follow up.
I know, I met a young girl who wanted to come back to school, I know that that's, um, her family's goal. But her family is currently working on having her older sister take custody, because her mother passed away last year, and. Until she has a legal guardian in place, they can't enroll her in school. And it's, it's heartbreaking, because there's literally nothing we at this table can do.
We updated our policy on enrollment last year.
Yeah.
And part of that policy allowed for some flexibility in documentation requirements. Specifically for people who are here without proper documentation for a variety of reasons, but. You know, we are a welcoming city, we get refugees, we get people who don't have documents, and the. Understanding I had from administration was, we would rather have the kids here in school where they are safe and getting an education. Blowing about waiting, so I would definitely encourage her to, um, either contact the local school or go contact the superintendent.
I would say, I've, um. I would say I've um, I've actually set her older sister up with Dr. Andre, so I'm.
Yes.
Fingers crossed that, you know, she'll be in school soon again, cuz she is such a bright young woman and. Definitely excited to go back to school, even if it means being a year behind her friends.
Yeah.
So, that's huge to me. I.
And we have the, you know, the summer school available for our non-traditional students, and we have adult and continuing ed available for non-traditional students. There's a, Nashua's a great place to be if you are looking to catch up or looking to take a non-traditional.
Definitely.
I'm like really proud of all of our continuing ed stuff that we offer, like I constantly bragging about it. Okay, like I have anything to do with it, but it just, it makes me really excited to live in a place that has these opportunities. Um, okay, so I move that we send um, J F A B D. Um, to the full board with the tiny amendment we talked about.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye? Okay, so the next one is the technical advisory in the packet. It isn't. Find where I sent the technical advisory. Um, so we talked about recently, there was a.
It's the last time, this one was up.
It is, it just didn't, it didn't make it to the packet. So I apologize everybody. Let me see if I can. Find this technical advisory. Here it is. Oh, Rob, I have the wrong, oh, there it is. So we had discussed recently, um, there were some changes to the law about non-public minutes. And that we have to review them every so often. Um, and um, having. Talked about this, um, I found that the New Hampshire Municipal Association had sent out a technical advisory, which I have just emailed you guys. The link to it. Um, and basically this tells us how we're supposed to be um, working on non-public minutes. And then the School Board Association also did an update on um, non-public minutes. And what they said is that, uh, what they both said, is that our policy is supposed to. Um, cover this. So on policy B E D G. Which is our meeting minutes policy, which I hate touching because it's always this like, it's always a giant can of worms.
It's gonna be a thing.
Gonna be a thing.
I'm so excited cuz now I'll get to explain publicly why if I vote no for the consent agenda, and I haven't been able to do that since the newbies got on.
Right, and so.
People are all confused why I'm being all anti-consent.
No, I, I, I hate touching it. Nonetheless, there's a lot, a lot of changes that have happened with how we're supposed to be keeping minutes. And me looking into this idea about what do we do with our non-public minutes so that we're in compliance with um, ninety-one A three. Uh, paragraph five, um, which is about having to review the non-public minutes, and if we don't review them within ten years, they're automatically unsealed. So, there's a lot to unpack here. I did not think that we would get through it tonight. I kind of thought the, of this as like an opening, let's open the discussion.
But the way, the, the length of time it takes us was probably a good idea if we get started.
Right, but with the idea that we, we really wanna focus on. Because remember, in the past, the district used to have verbatim minutes, right? But we don't have a transcriptionist anymore. So in order to do verbatim minutes, we would need to hire someone, and the going rate. Is um, like fifty thousand dollars a year.
Many school districts are now using A I to do transcription of minutes, and it is legal in New Hampshire.
It is.
I looked.
It's not very accurate. Being to supervise, like to go back and look at it.
My thought is Tara already has told us many times that she has to re-watch all of our meetings just to do the, the base minutes. If we already had the A I reading through it and giving the transcription, and she's watching the thing already. She can stare with the script in front of her to make sure that it is accurate, and that is far less work, and. There are versions of A I that are created specifically for schools, as well as specifically for businesses to do. Things like transcription, and you pay a little extra, but it guarantees you more accuracy.
Right, so can we, and this way, Mr. Poska, can we get um, an idea from the district? About how much a program like that would cost? Um, and if there are um, staff hours involved as well.
That being said, it also is a fun fact that as long as it is not a job that we have paid anyone for. Specifically in the last three years, which I, we should be coming up on. Um, then that means that we could have volunteers take the position. We have a whole workplace success program in Nashua of mostly women. Occasionally men too, who are parents that need to do volunteer hours in order to maintain their state benefits, and. They are often asked to do things like this.
I love volunteering. However, minutes are legal documents, and I would not want somebody. I just, I don't think we should do that.
Okay.
Because I, I just think that the liability is too great.
That's fair.
So, but I do wanna know from the district, how much a program like that would cost? How much staff hours and how it fits into the budget, which is good timing cuz we have budget coming up soon. Um, I'm hearing that. Well, I mean, I thi- yeah, I mean, I think there's the cost of, whenever you buy a computer program, there's the cost of the program and the cost of the annual license. Um, the state used to use for judiciary licensed transcriptionists, um, and they did away with that. Now they don't have to be licensed, and now they have like a recording thing that does it. But there's a lot of, because I'm on child and family law, I hear a lot of testimony from a lot of people who are displeased with. Transcripts that they're getting, and they don't feel that they're. Um, in fact, there's a special commission right now just to study that question.
But like, now if people had these minutes, and they were inaccurate, let's just say, and then we do the whole. Voting on the consent agenda, that's the perfect time for somebody to sit there and go, yeah, I was not portrayed correctly. I did not say those words. That did not happen.
We used to do that. We used to be like, or, or for example, if someone had a speech they were giving or their board member comments, they would email it to the transcriptionist. And say, hey, could you please include my exact verbatim speech in your minutes? Um, which is fun, but it was a lot of work, and we employed someone full-time to do that job. Oh, it was a full-time job for one person to cover all of our things. So I'd like to know from the district about that. Um, the other part of this, that I really wanted to focus on while we're waiting on that information. Is the non-public minutes section of this policy. Um, so, yeah, so. If you, if you just look at it, it's, it, it has, as we go through the policy, has the minutes required. Um, the required content of minutes, um, and this is directly from state law. This isn't something that like, I was like, oh, this is the only things that I think should be in there. This is, this is what the law requires. Um. And then um, approval of the minutes. And then on item D, on page thirty-two of our packet, page three of the policy, it says special provisions. For minutes relating to non-public sessions. So um. There was a bill last year, H B three twenty-one, um, which went into effect on October third twenty-three. Um, regarding special provisions of non-public minutes, and so we, we've done part of it. We have that new form. Um, which I am very vocal about saying, I don't think there's enough narrative space in there, because the minutes need to be more detailed. Um, and then the minutes in non-public session still have to meet this B required minutes. Required contents, and I don't know, I definitely, when we first out the, the, first got the form. I don't think I was, as the clerk, filling it out properly. Um, and so I took a training on it, and now I think we need to do some more, a little bit more. Um, the other thing we need to do about this policy is talk about. How we are going to review our minutes as is required. Um, so on page five of seven. Um, number five, it says reviewing and unsealing previously sealed minutes. So um, the board had considered creating a committee just to do that. Um, the law allows a couple of options, and I wanna, in this policy, we have both options. We don't need both options in the policy. We can, we should choose which one we wanna send forward. Um, and I don't expect us to have an answer tonight. I just wanted to open the conversation and then continue it as we go forward. Um. Option one is that the superintendent creates, or their designee. Um, uh, a, a log of the minutes. And then um. Alright, and then we get to decide under B, who is gonna be doing those reveal, doing those things. This, the, actually, the, the um, School Board Association suggested the policy committee. That's an option. We can create a committee, um, or the chair can designate one person to do it. I really think it should be more than one person.
Yeah.
That seems like a lot for one person.
Volunteers for a committee, right?
Volunteers for a committee, but I wanted to bring this all, I wanted to bring the options to us instead of being like, oh, I think we should just create a committee. Cuz I do, but maybe the policy committee wants it, I don't know.
I don't think so. Definitely not. I, you can notice that I did not volunteer for that committee.
So I think what, what I'd like to do for us is to decide um, if we want to do the policy committee. If we wanna create a minutes review committee um, here, so that then when we come back, we can just cut the language that we don't need. Right? And then focus on the rest of the language, so that is an evolving document. Um, so my suggestion is we go with a committee.
Is there a language in the, one of these options that a, a committee, is it?
Yeah, if, if, if you keep going, so under option one, the board establishes the following procedures. Um, blah, blah, blah. The first section is, it just says we're creating a record of all the me, of all the minutes. Um, and I spoke with Ms. Kinsella, we have records, we have meeting minutes that are like physical minutes. Going back to the seventies.
Okay.
And those are verbatim.
Oh, wow.
So those old ones will take some time. Um, so she's begun pulling a log of it.
Guys are gonna know way too much about the people that were on the board.
Right, so then the next step is to decide amongst ourselves here, do we want to. Designate a committee for it. I say yes with our volunteers. So I think um, what I'm gonna do is ask that when we come back, we, we're gonna select the, we have to come up with a name for a committee. Field minutes or non-public minutes review committee, or I don't know, if anyone has a good idea.
Just review committee, I mean, keep it simple.
Okay.
The, the top secret.
Top secret.
Undercover.
Undercover committee.
Call it the room thirteen.
Alright, so we're gonna have the review committee, and then it's not gonna be one board member. The chair will designate, how many do we, we had four volunteers? So, shall we say three and an alternate?
Yeah.
Plus one alternate, and then it says at the first blah, 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 which I think is fine, because that's typically when we assign our committees, but. There's nothing preventing us in policy from creating a committee at any time after that. Um. And then the next paragraph talks about, if the reviewing designees a committee more than one, we just decided it would be three or four. Um, we're gonna have non-public sessions, um, but it has to be noticed. So that means that um, this committee can meet at central office where the physical records actually are in like a box. Um, as long as we post on the calendar that we are having, it goes on our board of ed calendar, it gets posted within the appropriate. So this is a committee that could potentially meet during the day, during business hours, when someone at the central office is available to hand us the logs of records. Um, and so the reviewing, I think I'm gonna call them the reviewing committee instead of designee. Committee. Not envy Tara having to listen to that, try and figure out what I want her to do, cuz it's not, it's not awesome. I should print it out and write it right on it. Um. Oh, great. Mr. Poska's on it. Okay, so we want option one. Option one is. The log, that's fine. Board will. No, the. New committee. Will. Oh, the chair will designate, I'm sorry, three. At the first to be on the reviewing committee. Makes more sense. Do all non, blah, blah, and then I'm gonna change designee to committee every time. And then, I, you have here crossed out about um, the two paragraphs about. Uh, ninety-one A not requiring a public motion to seal, the justify no longer apply. I think we still need this part. So it's just crossing out that, keep this. Alright, so the reviewing committee is gonna review these minutes, will come up with their own. Um, schedule for it, right? Um, they'll review the minutes, and then on our agendas, when, after the reviewing committee has met. There'll be an agenda item where we say, hey, here's our list of, of minutes that were reviewed, and here are the ones that we recommend that we reseal. The ones we recommend to be unsealed. That make sense?
Um, what happens to the ones that we unseal? Are they posted on?
No, because our website only goes back however many years, but they would be then available should someone.
Someone can request them and.
Has a right to know.
Okay.
Is there any that are automatic? I mean, I saw the ten-year thing, but I didn't know if there's anything.
No, so if we do nothing in, at, in twenty thirty-three, all records that we haven't touched. That are from twenty twenty-three or before will be automatically concealed.
Okay, oh, so because it's new.
It is new. It's possible that, like, I'm trying to think of like, it's nineteen seventy-four. Do we really need these to be sealed? However, you know, if nineteen seventy-four, there are people who have been working in our district for thirty years. There are people in the community who used to work for the district, and so if any of these minutes are from grievance hearings or disciplinary hearings. Those are things I think should still. If there are um, minutes about, you know, we're talking about a student and, you know, during expulsion or something. Even though the student is an adult now, I still think that they have a right to privacy. Um, so I'm personally anti. I'd rather.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I'd rather double check, but I anticipate a lot of it is gonna be. Unsealable. Um. So it just reminds us that um, we can discuss the minutes of non-public. So we make a recommendation if people have questions, that discussion is in non-public until the minutes are unsealed, but the vote to unseal them has to be made in public. At a public board meeting. Sense? And then the other option in the, that they do is that um, just kind of there's no, no particular procedure. Um, I don't think we should do option two. Um, I don't think we should do option two because I like things to be clear. Because we're not all gonna be on the board for the next ten years, or maybe we will, but just in case there's new people. We want them to be able to have a clear procedure to follow.
Can you imagine if we had the same board for that? Have to be a really good board.
I don't know, that would be fantastic. Okay, um, and it just says that once we vote to unseal the minutes, they have to be available for our right to know across within seventy-two hours. By businesses. It shouldn't be that hard because especially for the old ones, we will have physically looked at them. Um, the new ones are on electronic copies, so what we, what the committee would probably have to do is get like a thunder drive or. Utilize a, a district. All hunched around a laptop or maybe in the conference room on the screen. Um, it doesn't say in this policy how often this committee is. So that's something I would like our committee to kind of percolate on. Come back, um, like a quarterly thing. I don't think we need to be reviewing non-public minutes.
Every week.
Yeah, or even a monthly basis.
Is that something that our committee, the policy committee is gonna decide or is it something that you guys will decide after you are?
I think it depends on um, if we decide to include periodic requirement in the policy. Or if we just let it be.
Okay.
I would probably lean to let the committee decide.
Comfortable with that as well, but I thought I'd throw it out there. Alright, so you're at seven twenty. So we have other thoughts that we wanna talk about in the next ten minutes?
I, I do not have ten minutes worth of thoughts. I've got like an hour worth of thoughts that I'm gonna go home. Percolate on and condense down to an easy to swallow ten minutes.
Okay, so for next time, we will include, oh, I'm gonna write these. Technical advisory in the next packet. From the municipal association. That everyone can have it, um, just so that it has, and that's not school related. The municipal association covers all municipal boards in the state, so everything from the county to the towns, cities. Right, because the rules governing the non-public minutes are the same, no matter what kind of board you sit on. Um, but that way we all have it and it's out there so that other people. Um, I didn't see a technical advisory from the state Department of Education on this one. Alright, so everyone has homework. The homework is to review B E D G. Think about um, how you want minutes to be handled. Um, in general, and also to review. Um, what is required by law now to be included in minutes to make sure that we are all understanding of it. And the school association does do a training on this, but I don't see it on their upcoming trainings. Or not, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're right. I wrote them down. Hold on.
They signed up for them, but I don't know if I'm gonna be able to watch them because they're gonna be so boring.
I lost my.
Trainings are interesting, but right to know is.
Right, I signed up for them and I, thank you. So now I'm in my.
I have part two here, that's uh.
Yeah, so the first one is.
April second.
April second. Part one, um, there's, they also have one on special education law. Um, and then right to know part two. Is April twenty-third. They mostly, I think the first one's at night, next we're at lunchtime. And the third one is on May fourteen. Uh, which is my husband's birthday, so he will be so thrilled that I will go to make a webinar. On the right to, and so these webinars are not only about non-public minutes. They're about everything you want to know about the right to know and right to know requests. Our obligations when we receive a right. Do you have a special, I do have a training just on non-public. I just haven't seen it yet. Alright, that's all I've got. Does anyone else have anything else? Okay, if anyone has anything that they want us to discuss, always email me. My queue continues to be um, legal updates. Um, and then there's a couple other things coming up. Um, so uh, we have the school nurses are reviewing J L C D. Uh, medication. Policy, so if your child has an, an EpiPen or a prescription that they. Okay, um, that's the policy governing how we do that. And then there's a form, so there's an R policy that goes along with it. So right now, the um, the head school nurses are meeting and discussing the policy and comparing it to state law. So that will be coming up. Um. Um, the dress code should be coming soon, Lauren. Yeah, Mr. Farley said that the Senate has been working on it. So as soon as he gets that to us, I will get it out to you guys. Um, we have to work on uh, different tenant eval policy. Because state law requires us to give him an evaluation once a year and there's a number of policy options for that. So I have given Dr. Andre the policy options so that he can. Find which one he likes.
Okay.
Um, and then um, we have to. Come up with a creation of a communication plan policy at some point.
Is that something that you've seen in the school?
No, I don't remember why I wrote it down. But it's on my list. Communication plan? Yeah. No, I think it's something else. I think that we were told you have to have one. Part of the Department of Justice. Review. I think it's from the Department of Justice. Then I have the Title IX. Annual update. That's a lot.
We'll never run out of policies to look at.
So if anyone wants to go home, I would entertain them.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Alright.
Third.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, we are adjourned at seven twenty-five.